Attendees still on hold. Start broadcast. Do you want me to hit it? You want me to get it? Good evening. We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Wednesday, November 17th, 2020, at 5:31 PM. Yuri, would you please provide a brief introduction?
Hello and welcome. My name is Yuri Monaco, and I will be providing assistance to the mayor and elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during the public meeting. There will be specific times during the meeting when members of the public can ask questions to provide feedback. The first way is by typing the question into the question section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those questions will be read into the record by any organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the raised hand option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name or the record. Forcefully using these state steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during your allotted time. I will turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you, Yuri. First off, we will have an invocation by Father Dan Fink of St. Mark's Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Woodrow Al Hay.
Almighty God, Creator of the universe, you created man and woman in your image and likeness, and set them as stewards of creation, and give each of us an immortal soul, free will, intelligence, and wisdom. It is your will that man and woman be of service to one another, to govern and protect justice and charity. You instill your wisdom upon all leaders, civic, elected, and appointed, to ensure that the principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness are not merely ideals, but lived realities. We ask this night that as our elected commissioners gather to ascertain what is right and just for the people of Boynton Beach, that you send your presence upon them. Fill these men and women, your servants, with prudence and charity, and liven them with your wisdom and understanding, right judgment and courage, knowledge and reverence for you and for each other. Finally, fill each one here with wonder and awe in your presence. We make this prayer to you, O Holy One, O immortal God, one God living and true, who lives and reigns forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. As we salute our flag, let us all place our hands of our hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tyfen Sorga.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz. Absent. Commissioner Woodrow Al Hay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. We'll begin with informational items by members of the City Commission. Commissioner Hay, would you like to begin?
Nothing for me at this time.
All right. Commissioner Romulus?
I have no disclosures. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pen Sorga?
No disclosures at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. As for myself, on November 5th, I attended the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force. While at that meeting, we did a motion that was approved to add a 20-foot flagpole next to the sign for Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Memorial Veterans Park. And so that was the recommendation to, that I'm bringing up to the board right now. So, Laura, I see you're writing notes. If we could get that in front of the Parks and Rec to see if that's allowed. And I believe that Tom says that he would cover any sort of cost with that. The next, on November 6th, I attended Gulfstream Park to do the oath of service for the AmeriCorps in Palm Beach County. I was informed that 40% of the AmeriCorps serve here in Boynton Beach. And so if anyone of our students or residents that need help with any sort of, I guess, reading, or education, or homework help, they are here in our libraries to assist all. That afternoon, I was at Northwest 11th Avenue for Habitat for Humanities, a couple groundbreaking for two of their homes. I'd like to thank the commission. It's been almost three or four years that Northwest 11th Avenue, we finally got all the properties and all the new homes that are there. It's looking very beautiful as part of our Model Block program. On November 10th, I attended the Caregivers Luncheon with Healthier Boynton Beach, and I just want to give a shout out to Ricky Petty and Healthier Boynton Beach, Pathways to Prosperity, for making sure that our senior population gets the care that is needed for them. On November 11th, I attended Veterans Day at our Veterans Park, and I'd like to say thank you for all those who attended. I think it was well received, and I'm looking forward to our next Veterans event for Pearl Harbor and hope maybe we could have it at our amphitheater. Who knows? On this, this past Saturday was Diwali, and I just want to wish the Baps Temple here in Boynton Beach a happy Diwali. And today, I was in West Palm Beach for the inauguration of our two new county commissioners, Maria Moreno and Maria Sax, along with the inauguration of Dave Kerner and Mac Bernard. I look forward to the new relationships that will form and have, I believe, an even better relationship with the county as we move forward. And so those are my informational disclosures.
Mayor Grant?
Yep.
Can we go through?
Agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. So, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, or any additions, revisions, or corrections?
May I believe we were requested to remove the legacy agenda items?
Yes, I'd like to put that on future agenda items. Is that okay with the commission?
Sure, that's fine.
Yes, yes.
Same effect.
All right. And so.
Will be made. I'll offer a motion to accept the.
Okay, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Our first announcement is by Eleanor Crissell, Public Communications and Marketing Director, regarding light up downtown Boynton and installation of holiday lights along Ocean Avenue.
Evening, Mayor, Grant, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to announce that the city's 50th annual holiday parade has been canceled due to COVID. And as an alternative and safe program for the community to celebrate the upcoming season, the city will light up downtown Boynton by decorating the K-Poc tree, the two banyan trees, and the 18 light poles in town square. The Boynton Beach Redevelopment Agency will light up the K-Poc tree in Dewey Park, and we will be working together with the CRA to market this new event, to promote downtown businesses, and particularly our restaurants that will be open when the lights are on. And as we indicated in the agenda item, we hope that to further develop the Light Up Downtown campaign in coming years and budget accordingly, so that at some point it will be from Seacrest to the bridge. We are looking forward to it, and we will provide you with a date and a time when we can flip the switch and notify the public at that time. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Eleanor, are we doing anything for Boynton Beach Boulevard from I-95 to U to federal? Like, you don't have to light it up as much as we're going to do Ocean, but flags of some kind of, are there any consideration for doing something for Boynton Beach Boulevard?
In this budget year, we do not have that budgeted. We have allocated the amount of money that was set aside for the parade, which was approximately $25,000, to do what we are doing this year, but certainly I would be pleased to reconsider that in future year budgetings. I do want to indicate that that K-Poc tree once lit up, we're very hopeful that you can see that from Boynton Beach Boulevard, as well as Seacrest and Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Hearing none. Our next announcement is the new art mural for Fire Station Number One will be unveiled at 4:00 PM on Thursday, November 19th, 2020. The public is welcome. CDC guidelines will be followed. And so where should the public be parking for this event?
I think the parking lot right across the street from the station, Mayor.
All right.
And we'll be blocking off, I think it's First Street right there, and we'll be placing chairs out on the pavement. It's a restricted area, and we are concerned about distancing, so we'll block that road off.
So that's Northeast First Street and First Avenue. Will we close that entrance to the parking lot, and people will have, thank you, will have the ability to get into the parking lot on Boynton Beach Boulevard? Is that the access point we should have everyone come in and out of?
Eleanor, has PD told you what their MOT is? I don't think First Avenue is being closed, or is it?
Well, First Street is to get to First Avenue.
Right, but I think the avenue is going to be maintained and policed there. The First Street is where we'll be sitting, so people can, they can come in either entrance, most likely.
Yeah. We're encouraging the public to come in off of Boynton Beach Boulevard, Mayor Grant, for safety reasons, and then making a right into the parking lot for where the employees park. There's plenty of parking there. If overflow is needed, we will go ahead in the Children's Museum on the far east side. There will be police officers there to assist, as the city manager indicated. First will be closed because we will be placing chairs in the road there.
Yeah, it's, I think, you know, the aspect of Northeast First Street and First Avenue, where the mural is, just to make sure that public is safe and that they're not getting, there's no cars going down a dead end.
Right, and we've notified the houses on that street that entrances will be limited during that hour period, and we do have officers on site. We did that similar one, Mayor Grant, for the Safety Day that we gave out the extinguishers. It worked very well.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
All right. And next, I have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, and I believe our own John Dergan will be accepting it. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas the City of Boynton Beach celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.1% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of the US small businesses reported that they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of US small businesses owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again, and 3/4 of US consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 90% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach, Florida supports our local businesses that create jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. John, you have the floor.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. John Dergan, Economic Development Manager with the City of Boynton Beach. According to American Express, for every dollar spent at a small business in the US, approximately 67 cents stays in that local community. This means for every $100 spent at a small business, $67 stays in that community. Of that 67 cents, it is estimated that 44 cents goes to the small business owner and their employees' wages and benefits, and 23 cents gets reinvested into other local businesses. It is also estimated that for every dollar spent at a small business, it creates, on average, an additional 50 cents in economic impacts in that local community. The city would like to recognize the importance of Small Business Saturday, which will be celebrated this year on November 28th. We know this year's Small Business Saturday will be the most important one yet. According to American Express and the National Federation of Independent Businesses, in 2019, US shoppers spent a record high $19.6 billion on Small Business Saturday. So shopping small has a large economic impact on your local community. There are also additional benefits to shopping at small businesses. Small businesses add to the diversity of products and services available to your community. They provide access to local experts about the products and services that will best work in your community, because these business owners are your neighbors and your friends and your colleagues. And small businesses also provide communities with a unique identity that makes them different from other cities. So when you support your local businesses, you are preserving the unique character of your community. To recognize Small Business Saturday, the city started a campaign to draw attention to the importance of shopping small. So the first thing we did was start a social media campaign that provided facts on the economic impacts of shopping small, which you see pictured here. We also, on whyboynton.com, that's W-H-Y-Boynton.com, that's the city's Economic Development and Strategy homepage, at the top of the homepage, we created a link where people can submit testimonials on their favorite local small businesses. This link will be available on our social media platforms as well. These testimonials will be featured on the city's Facebook page, as well as the city's website, with the goal of building a list of small businesses that highlight the goods and services that they provide. And we will make that list available to the public, so they will be able to shop and frequent those local businesses. And that list will be provided from the public. So it's almost getting a Yelp review with a list of small businesses that would really help small businesses and shoppers on Small Business Saturday. And our, and finally, one of our goals as the Department of Economic Development Strategy is to connect our businesses to resources that provide value as a business owner and operator. And one of those resources that we are looking to provide is hosting a series of free workshops on different business topics that will be of value to business owners. And we wanted to get direct input from the business community on those workshop topics, so we created a survey. This survey was distributed through our Business Master List that has over 5,200 recipients. We really wanted to reach out to our business community and get their direct input on what topics will be most useful and helpful to them, whether that's social media help, whether they want to transition part of their business to e-commerce, or if they just need help navigating this COVID economy. We want to provide, we want to recruit experts in those fields and provide a free workshop for local businesses here. And those will be held virtually, and David and I will be getting some more information on those workshops here shortly. And we've also been coordinating with the wonderful CRA staff on their small business initiatives, and we'll be working together and collaborating to promote and support our small businesses. Now, I do want to give a special shout out and thank you to our Communication and Marketing Department. They've been extremely helpful and important on getting this message out to our community. So I do want to thank them. They've been extremely helpful. And again, we just want to celebrate and honor our small businesses here in the city and recognize their importance to our community and our quality of life, and want to recognize their impact as an economic driver of our local economy. And again, we just want to remind everybody that Small Business Saturday is November 28th, so please go out and support our local businesses. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John. I did have one question, though. Is there anything in the works for our small businesses to get to work with our sustainability coordinator and to go green? One of the aspects of, you know, using a, going to a local business is that there's a lot less travel and other costs. I believe it is better for the environment. So that is something that, I don't know if you've looked into, or have the time to look into, but is a question that I have.
No, you're absolutely right, Mayor, and I just talked to Rebecca not too long ago. We're really going to make a second push here to really get the word out about our Green Business Program, as well as our Business Inclusion Program. I think both those programs have the same message of really providing customer with some, with some great information on why it'd be important to shop at their business if they do provide inclusive programs, as well as if they are sustainable. You're absolutely right. When you shop small and you shop local, you're absolutely making a positive environmental impact. So we are, I'll get Rebecca here shortly and give you some more information on our efforts to get the Go Green Business Program going.
All right. Thank you so much. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did I, yes. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. John, I had a suggestion for you, and perhaps it's something your team may have already done, but one of the things that I've found really helpful, I've seen it in other cities, is if perhaps, and this goes by many names, if there's some sort of like a passport type of setup where we actually give people like a map or a list of small businesses that they can go and explore. Do we have anything like that in the works where to kind of encourage people, hey, come by in this corner of the city, come by in this other corner of the city, discover something new?
Yeah, yes, Vice Mayor. We actually have been working really closely with our GIS department. So it's not a physical map. We had an idea for, but really we're trying to get everything electronic and go virtual. So we're really, what our ultimate goal is, and we are working on this, is really creating a GIS interactive map that would kind of highlight our small businesses and give people access on their, on their phone, on their mobile phone while they're out and about in the city to showcase our small businesses and really point out their location and some facts about that small business. So that has been in talks. We're not there yet, but we do work closely with our great GIS department that will help us with that.
That's good to hear, John. I think, you know, I'm hoping that in the future, when COVID hopefully goes away, or at least reduces significantly, that we kind of encourage people to say, hey, this weekend, why don't we all try our barbecue places? Or this weekend, let's go something, let's go try something vegan. So having those kind of recommendations, it doesn't have to be specific, but it would really encourage people to go out and focus their support, instead of just spreading around everywhere. But thank you, John.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it.
Not hearing anything else. We will now open, we will end announcements and move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
40777th Avenue, apartment 101, Oriole. I have a question. Is Agenda 8, it's not, it's not even what we talked about tonight?
So 8, A, B, and C.
Okay, it's A, B, and C. Okay. Well, I want to talk about, I want to talk about light, the light downtown Boynton.
Okay.
That's something we talked about, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, like, why every year, every year for the last, I don't know, since I've been coming down, y'all do light up, y'all do light up. Y'all don't light up, y'all don't light up Ocean Avenue. What about downtown? What about downtown Martin Luther King? What about downtown anywhere else? It's not the only downtown we have. We built all that stuff y'all built out there in Congress. That's wasting money. Everybody's getting light up. If y'all canceling all these events, y'all cancel all week with no event this year but one, and now y'all, y'all ain't got no money to light us up. It's not the end of 25,000. It don't cost $25,000 lighting up Ocean Avenue. And another thing I want to talk about, Ocean Avenue. We praise Ocean Avenue like that's the only part of Boynton. We got a brand new restaurant on Cherry Hill, a brand new restaurant in there. Them girls in there are cooking, they're doing all they can in there. Not one city official came in there getting one red cent. Not one. You know? Then, you know, we got restaurants opening now in the wood, too. We want to see some of y'all, a fitness, like our commissioner. I know it's COVID-19, but you could call in there and bring it to your car. You don't have to drop the car. That's right. You know, so we got to thought, and why would you only worry about if you're going to get light on Boynton Beach Boulevard? Why we not worry about getting light on Cherry Hill and our new center we got or whatever? One of the biggest centers in Boynton, Carolyn Sims Center, cost $13 million in the deal up. So that mean the deal moving business over there, right? Light still on, and the water still on. I just called Mary after. I called Mary then after with the light and water on still at the center. She said, yeah. I said, well, business there running over here. Why didn't our community then add them to that center over there? This center, this library cost us millions of dollars, millions, and it's beautiful. I love it. But why can't our center be open as well? Because we pay our taxes, I pay taxes. I know everybody moving different to pay taxes, it's like, why isn't it going over to the community? They keep talking about it ain't open, it ain't open, but the lot, this big old pretty place open? The police station open? See, man, could I get a tour of the police station? If that's what the public could get, I heard the public could have that exit and go there and see, can we have a tour of the police station? Because we paying our taxes, that's our station, right? This is my, this is our library, right? Roger, Susan? This is ours. That's right. We got to thought about using the word ours. Yes, right. In Boynton Beach. That's right. Not there, there, no, ours. Oh. We can thought, we never again, I think we'll go a long way. That's right. Our time. That's right. This is our community, this is our library, this, why not, why not nobody coming to our neighborhood? We don't see no city official coming to, I don't even have much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tori. To ask, answer some of your questions, I do think that the city should not just spend all of the light budget on Ocean Avenue. We have differently, because if it's city money, it doesn't necessarily need to be in the CRA district, and there are businesses along Gateway Boulevard that have not, and you've mentioned Carolyn Sims, Sarah Sims. There are a lot of other locations that have never received holiday lights. I remember when I first got elected mayor, I put up some, what is it, the solar powered lights, because that was the only lights, and that has been the only lights in the past five years. So hopefully, we could, the commission will revisit that item and get that. As for a tour of the police station, parts of the station is offline from public view. However, I do believe we are still in the works with our real-time crime center, and so we want to make sure that the police station is finalized before we start giving off tours, but that is something that our chief would have the answer when that's going to happen. And I don't think it's going to be on a daily, but hopefully, people who join our COP program will have that tour of the police department.
What is that?
Citizens on Patrol.
That's the one where we can see it?
That's one way to see it, hopefully. I don't have the answers. I can't guarantee anything. But I would say that. But I would say that it is our certain citizens that want to help the police out. That is one of the benefits is that they can have a tour.
Not bad.
Uh, I'm just saying that that is one of our possibilities. I'm not saying that is the only possibility. And I believe, is there any other questions that can answer? All right. You're welcome. And Yuri, if anybody online wants to raise their hands or ask a question, please allow them that option.
Bishop Bernard Wright, seven thirteen Northwest Second Street, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries Real Talk Radio, cousin of Robert E. Womack, you're bored. Also CEO of Rocky Wales, foundation. Let me piggyback on what Cora said. Historically, we always had lights coming down American Junior Boulevard, which was originally Wells Avenue. I don't know why so many years have passed and we haven't lit it up, even just with FLP lighting, because light is still dark. We always talk about the crime and things. We never did the right thing that caused an effective leadership. But let me just say this, and let me piggyback on something else that you said. We have a new establishment over there on Cherry Hill, and they have another yellow sign there that was called a nuisance ordinance. And unnecessarily because they were supposed to be out in September. We have new ownership there. They placed it back because they want to do just what you said right now. Hold us round sharp. If I can get your cameras where I can, you know, you want us to communicate, you know, want them to, you know, cooperate with the police department where they can come in, tell who were around this leave and this and the other, because these people here are making a living. And they respect us as patrons, and we do have constitutional rights. And that should have gone, been put down. I talked to a commissioner, hey, you can go to go and talk with Sam. I've heard anything about him stopping them because we are trying to restore what once was, and that was solidarity in Boynton, and Boynton being a private neighborhood in District Two. We have too long, far too long been disenfranchised and been behind the eight ball as second-class citizens, all the way from education to economics. But today in this pandemic of racism and Corona, it's a whole new ballgame, and you're gonna have to face it, either with us or you're not. We are about getting things done over there by the grace of the living God. So let's feel attention and a drift that which is relevant. That is, as these new projects, redevelopment coming in, we have to have a percentage of equity of those in the resident of District Two can get in there. And whatever it is that, oh, you're not meeting this, then let's get the program where they can meet that. So how they have throw this this mucker wrench in Ocean Breeze East, we definitely want that, but we're planning. By no means, because that's gentrification. If you move those out in the community, been there all these years, I don't care they come and they black from there already, whatever they come, that's gentrification. That is the definition of it. Moving those who have peruse there and bringing others in to God be the glory. I hope you all, so we don't have litigation unnecessarily and a seed of discord being sown into this city about changing names and all this kind of stuff, and we should be about relevant stuff. The George Floyd issue still is alive. The neo-nanics, any injustice economically, socially, criminally, judicially, it does not matter. As a current candidate for mayor, by the grace of God, knowing the God places up there and bring us down, I'm still gonna be doing what I'm doing, no matter what. I won't see a change for the benefit of the people. You can be my sin, but you don't have to be my king to God be the glory.
Thank you. And I did want to note that there is a specific Florida statute, eight one two point one seven three, that goes over convenience business security, which does require a security camera system capable of recording, retrieving an image to assist in offender identification and apprehension.
They do, and they have audio, but it's theirs, and it's not yours. And this is not a police state, and we're not gonna advocate it being a police city. And if that's where you at with racist, we're talking about white supremacy. Hey, baby, it gonna change because the whole community gonna come out against this. We are citizens, and we have a right, and even if a council's ready to be secured, our housing, personal effect, not just for undermiated surges from you just interfering in our life and we have privacy, baby. And you don't have access, you won't have access to my camera, my house, to God be the glory. And they own that. And they pay any money. Let's go. And the city is not one to dictate.
Excuse me, but your your time has ended.
Yeah.
Excuse, excuse me, you cannot speak unless you're at the podium. Your time from the podium is over. If I hear you again, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Hi, Susan Oyer, one forty Southeast Twenty Seventh Way. I want to say I have a couple topics to talk about.
And there are no need for dictatorship with the city conditions, he's very, have a good day. All right. You don't know whatever, I mean, I never run someone out of a city condition, have a good day, son. All good, very good.
All right. My apologies.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
One forty Southeast Twenty Seventh Way, several things. First of all, and to address the Small Business Saturday, American Express has been offering offering like a double points thing if you go shop for go-to small businesses. So you just have to sign up for it with American Express, so that might be something for people to look at. Second of all, what's the status on our Christmas tree and Hanukkah lights this year? We've had that for decades, and now there's no mention of a Christmas tree and Hanukkah lights, and I'm wondering what's going on, because my understanding is there's some rumbling around and about as to what the status is. Third of all, I want to make sure everyone feels invited to November twenty ninth, for having the first anniversary of the Ferendola becoming our sister city, and we're having a Zoom celebration. So all of the elected officials, Lori, you're invited too. Everybody from the city is invited. You just need to reach out to Jeannie, or you can go to the BoyntonSisterCities.org website and email us and get added to the Zoom link. I want to say if you're looking for something unique for the holidays, remember Ferendola does sell their products. Now's the right time to order them in, so they're in in time for the holidays. They do have home of a kind cheese that's made only in Ferendola by women only. They have organic honey, they have, which is to die for. They have organic olive oil, saffron. You run a corner of the saffron market, if you've seen how much it costs at Publix, you'll know that, you know, it's what, eight dollars for a package, and it's twenty-five cents in Ferendola. So there's plenty of opportunities to get some nice, unique things for the holidays for people from our sister city. I wanted to let everyone know the mayor in Ferendola has actually had COVID, and he's feeling better, but he has been ill. Italy, of course, is on its second lockdown now, so it's coming back and hitting everyone hard. And if you do not get the Abruzzo digital magazine, Ferendola is in the like the county or province of Abruzzo, and they have a digital magazine that they send out, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and they cover everything in the whole area. History, recipes, all kinds of neat stuff. If you're interested, feel free to reach out to me, and I can give you the link for it. And let's see, the last thing I think I want to talk about is I hope you all got the check I sent towards the establishment of the Quantum Eco Park. I figure I kick this off with a donation, so no one can accuse me of not loving all the parks and loving all the trees. So I would like to know about the Christmas tree and Hanukkah lights. So that's something that we've had in our downtown for decades, and I would hate to see us lose them while we're expanding all the other lights, which we should be doing, but you know, I don't want to see us lose a proud piece of our history.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a little secret for that?
Um, with the, I'm gonna ask the commission if we can bring up the announcement three A again to get a better understanding of light up downtown Boynton, if that does include holiday lights. And where exactly the location, if we can expand it to other city properties throughout the city.
I totally agree. Thank you.
So hopefully, we'll have that conversation at the end of public audience. And Yuri, do we have anyone with their hand raised? All right. So I'll ask the the commission to uh, have Eleanor, Chrisella, our marketing director, to explain if there is going to be holiday lights or just winter lights.
At this time, what's been bitted out and quoted and secured are lights in the K-Poc tree, in the K-Poc Park, where the playground is, the older playground is, the two banyans that are on, as you head down east on Ocean Avenue on the right by the amphitheater. And then the light poles that have electric plugs on the bottom of them, which are eighteen, basically that are in front of the buildings.
Okay, and that is all that the the city is doing for the the lights? And so there is going to be no sort of religious lights this year?
The budget that we allocated towards this was twenty-five thousand from the parade. The total that these three components are coming towards is twenty-three eight five oh. So you have about a thousand dollars that we put aside in the event that we need additional electric or something occurs that is not on board for those three projects.
Here, we're we're not doing our traditional holiday celebrations due to COVID this year. The the tree will not be located because we typically do a tree lighting event around that. We didn't want to put up a twenty-five thousand dollar tree that nobody can really see without celebrating and bringing the public downtown to celebrate. So we thought we would just try to make some cheerful impact along the avenue in our Newtown Square area with with literally white lights. No specific, it's like you said, more of a winter look, a holiday look to cheer everybody up, since we aren't able to do much more this year, and twenty-five thousand went that quickly. So, you know, we just merely substituted that budget to try to do something else to make it look nice.
All right, um, I don't think that is, I'm not okay with that. The fact that we're not having any colors and it's just white light, I think, is sending the wrong signal uh, here in Boynton Beach. I think we should have lots of colors, rainbows of colors of lights, and I think that's one aspect of it. We do have different temples and churches. And I I think I asked if we could reach out to them to see if they're willing to help participate and not necessarily have an event for it, but just have a it over time and that some, you know, sometime after Thanksgiving it would start. And so I would like to see a menorah in our downtown. I'd like to see the the religious lights as we have normally done here in Boynton Beach, and just adding the white lights. We have white lights in our street lamps. I don't think it's it's the that value. I think we need to have them colorful. But this is my opinion, and one of the last things I said is that, yes, I do feel like we need to put lights north of Boynton Beach Boulevard in any of the the locations I mentioned of along Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, Sarah Sims, Carolyn Sims, Ezel Hester, Gateway Boulevard. And and that's
You used to do that years ago, Mayor. We we did. When I first started with the city, we had lights on every one of those locations that you mentioned, because it was, and it was something that doesn't cost nearly what it does now. It's it's excuse me, a budgetary limitation. So if we want to budget, we could do so much more.
And so I I'm okay of not having either the the K-Poc tree or the banyan trees and spend that money at other locations. And also the this, the poles as well. But I'm gonna let the the commission respond. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So generally, I agree, and I support the idea that we should try to light up other parts of the city, but I do have uh, two questions as of the moment. Eleanor, have, has this already, has this money already been spent? Do we already have the vendors and contract? In other words, is it too late at this point?
Yes, the PO is signed and has been quoted out, and the vendor has been selected.
Okay.
Tremendous amount of work has gone into that to get
Yeah, I've sent, Lori, there was a email that originally went out suggesting the alternative correct. And I think that that, at that time is when we quoted it out. We are on a very, very strict timeline right now to even get that up. And I do want to say that the CRA did put in additional dollars to do what they had traditionally done at Dewey Park. Now, they traditionally had the Hanukkah symbol and the other activities there, which they can't do this year due to COVID, but did agree to continue lighting that tree in that park.
Right. So thank you, Eleanor. So it seems like to me that this is a kind of a foregone conclusion at this point, but uh, for future years, I do agree with the mayor, we need to light up other parts of the city, and and there's nothing wrong with adding additional holiday ambience to it. I think that's a good thing for everybody, and the wealth needs to be spread around a bit. I I do have a question, Lori, since you did mention that the city in the past has done this. What kind of ball fart figures are we talking about in terms of of cost?
That was a very long time ago, for one. I know, because the minute when recession hit, Vice Mayor, is when all of that stopped. So that was literally back in two thousand eight and nine. So I I would have to go look up what we spent, but we literally, we had lights on Sea Crest, we had it on MLK, we had it at our SIM Center, all in front of City Hall and Boynton Beach Boulevard on the corner. And all, all the holiday lighting was was cut when the recession hit, and then we slowly have come back to having the holiday tree and budgeting for that each year and and the parade. Well, actually, the CRA always paid for the tree. And we funded the twenty-five thousand a year for the parade. So this year cancelling the parade, and the CRA also shifted out of the event genre, right? So we, that kind of shifted over to the city. So it, we can do so much. It's just going to cost money. So if we want to expand, I, we're happy to get prices. We would start in January doing so. It's just a matter of funding it. And I can, Eleanor, perhaps, I don't know if the vendor we're using can do, I'm sure they probably have like the a menorah, maybe just a small tree and the a Kwanzaa piece that maybe we could locate in K-Poc. We could see what that costs to add that to what we're doing. And then take a look for next year. It's just a matter of money.
I can certainly ask the vendor what the cost of those particular items would be. We have had discussions internally of taking the days of our celebrations, including Kwanzaa and Hanukkah, and lighting, as you know, all our buildings have the uplighting. So in those days, we would be celebrating those particular holidays with the uplighting of our cultural center, our schoolhouse, children's museum, and our city hall.
Thank you. And and I'd be interested in seeing what those estimates might be, and the reason that I'm curious is not just for the future, but for example, if I could gather enough neighborhoods and enough HOAs to kind of chip in, is that gonna be a reachable, attainable goal for me to, is it gonna be five thousand or less? Is it gonna be more? It depends on length, of course. So I'm interested in that. So maybe we can do kind of a grassroots approach temporarily until the economy gets better. But thank you for getting that.
Commissioner Ty would want that the product supply at this point is very low. I will ask, you know, I will ask tomorrow, but once you get a couple of weeks out from the December, and a lot of cities have already installed, of course. So I will, I definitely will reach out to the other vendors, as well as our local vendor that we use from Boynton Beach for this year, and see if there's any way that she can obtain any additional costs and get them back, any additional services and get them back.
I appreciate that, but you are right. That's another layer of complication here, the supply. Understood. Thank you.
And so there's no opportunity to get any other color of light except white?
At this point, the white lights have been ordered. I can go ahead and check with her again tomorrow. If you're discussing the the tree lights, is that what you're thinking of putting green and red into the trees?
Absolutely.
Okay. We based, I can, I can check with her tomorrow. The green lights, of course, won't show as prevalent. The the green, the red and blue ones will. We base that on the response of those lights that were placed in Dewey Park. At the time, the public had overwhelming feedback on the white light, so we were keeping them consistent with what we had as feedback in the past few, few years.
And so if there's nothing else from the the commission, we will move on to administrative. Do you believe we have one candidate for the library board? Uh, Vice Mayor Pinterga. Would you like? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to, would anyone like to pull an item from consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. Would anyone like to pull an item here? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. And all those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight D and A. And eight E. Jim?
Ordinance 20038, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property, commonly known as Wells Landing North and described herein, changing the land use designation from local retail, commercial, and medium density residential to mixed use low, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance 20039, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and more commonly referred to as Wells Landing North from C2 neighborhood, commercial, and R2 single and two-family residential to MU1 mixed use one, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
All right.
That would be on 038.
Thank you. Now, do we want a presentation? Or do we want to proceed with a roll call?
We'll call this a formality, isn't it, Mayor?
I mean, it's, we have to let the public speak, so. Have an opportunity to speak if they'd like to say something in regards to the naming or anything in regards to the project as is for the rezoning. So.
I'm not opposed to hearing the, the public speak. That's not what I was saying no to.
Okay. So if we do not need another, a second presentation, I'll open it up to the public. All those online, please raise your hand or ask, hit a question. Otherwise, I do not believe anyone from the, the audience here is coming up to the podium. Yep, I do have someone with their hand raised. We have Brian Herbert. You have been unmuted.
Thank you. I'm the architect for the project. I was just raising my, my hand and found I needed to do a presentation.
All right. I don't think we, we need a second presentation.
Thank you.
And so may I have a roll call, please, for opposed ordinance 20-038?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz? Absent. Commissioner Hay? Commissioner Hay? Commissioner Romulus?
Present. Or aye, sorry. Aye.
Okay. The vote is 3-0.
Is Commissioner Hay shown as connected to, there we go. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Hay, we need your, your vote on ordinance 20-038 to approve the changing of the future land use. I don't think your connection is very strong. We're not hearing any sound.
Mayor, without verbal, a thumbs up from the commissioner would indicate an affirmative vote. Thumbs down would be a no.
So Commissioner Hay, are you able to give us a thumbs up? Yes, we have a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, voting 4-0.
Mayor, the ordinance 20039 is a reversion to first reading. So you need a motion for first reading adoption.
Okay. And so may I have a motion for 20-039?
So move.
Second.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to have a, make a comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay? Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
Jim, are we allowed to do, approve the site plan and have the zoning or do-
No, no, Mayor. You have to have the zoning in place by a second reading adoption before you could do the site plan.
Okay. So we'll move forward with, we'll have item, you stay on the table. Jim, can you read ordinance 20-040?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Wells Landing North from C2 neighborhood, commercial, and R2 single and two-family residential to MU1 mixed use one, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Good. I hear, I heard you. Is there anyone from the audience or from online that would like to make a comment? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
Jim, ordinance 20-041?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, approving the abandonment of a portion of an unimproved five-foot wide alley running east and west to Sea Crest Boulevard East to approximately 460, 36, 436.5 feet, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records in Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We got two motions to approve. Does someone want a second? Thank you, Commissioner Hay. Hey, discussion, seeing none. Any comments from the audience or from online? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pensurga?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Vote is 4-0.
Mayor Grant, the clerk, just to confirm that we have gotten the ordinance on the abandonment of the 30-foot wide right-of-way? That's 20-040. I think I might have misread that title.
Okay. On the, we have the, we have the ordinance on the 30-foot right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to remove item G from the table?
Well, move.
Second.
Approve Wells Landing South new site plan for a multifamily residential development consisting of two four-story buildings with a total of 100 affordable housing dwelling units associated park and related site improvements on a 2.69 acre site. Applicant Elizabeth Roke, Wells Landing Apartments. Does anyone like a presentation for the site plan for the south?
Mayor, this is, wait, we haven't heard this one yet, have we?
I don't believe so.
Then I'd like to hear it.
So would I.
All right. So.
This is Brian Herbert with Gala Herbert Architects, 1311 Newport Center Drive, Deerfield Beach, Florida. This presentation was, was giving, given at the last commission meeting, but I will, I'm happy to go through it again if you'd wish. The Wells Landing South project is located on Martin Luther King Boulevard in, in Boynton Beach. Next slide, please. This consists of a new site plan. And that is our proposal request. Next slide, please. This is an image of the site plan. It's composed of two four-story buildings, approximately, actually 100 units in total. The buildings have been located along Martin Luther King Boulevard, pushed up to the front, so that all of the parking is in, is in the rear of the building. We've located site amenity, site amenities on the, on the site, such as a large plaza area along Martin Luther King Boulevard in order to help increase the pedestrian-friendly atmosphere along Martin Luther King. There's also elements such as bike racks, seating areas, little public plazas, and so forth. Some of the details that are shown on this sheet that had come up in the last presentation was, there was a question about if there is a site, a site wall, site wall details located in the lower left-hand corner of the, of the page. It's a decorative precast concrete wall. Next slide, please. The site will take on a number of green amenities. I had listed those in detail in the last presentation, but briefly, we're required to have a minimum of 20 points. We're achieving, in addition to that, we're achieving 21 points. All of these are energy-saving and water-saving type elements, bike racks, electric charging vehicle stations, a butterfly-attracting plant materials, things of that nature. All of those were selected from the sustainability list in your land development code. And next slide, please. This is a rendition of the landscape plan. We're planting extensive landscaping on the site where we can, large landscape buffers around the property with the trees, bushes, so forth. We've created a pedestrian plaza in the front with large shade trees, which take on the same character that has been prescribed up and down Martin Luther King Boulevard with other projects. They'll be in tree planters in order to create sort of that plaza atmosphere along, along Martin Luther King. Additionally, at the lower right-hand corner of the property, it was suggested in the planning development meeting that that area be kept a little bit more natural, proposing some slash pine trees, open green space, and so forth. The next slide, please. This is a rendition of how the two sites mirror or fit together. This is the southern portion that we're talking about right now. There's another northern parcel that was presented during the last meeting and needs approval as well. Next slide, please. This is a civil engineering schematic. Number of questions had come up during the planning stage. And this is, was included to be able to show that radiuses for fire hydrants, turning radiuses for fire department vehicles, all of those items were met and as displayed in, in this diagram. Next slide, please. These are the conceptual elevations of the building. Again, it's a four-story building. We've created little porch elements down at the bottom. You can see that in the center elevation on the page. Again, this is to create this more pedestrian-friendly elements down, down low at that plaza level in order to give the building more of a human scale to the pedestrian. The, the architecture is sort of dubbed as a Floridian architecture. It's a, it's a mix of old Florida style and a Caribbean style. You know, nice colors, but the metal roofs, nice handrails, things of that nature, to really give it a, a nice, a nice Florida and Caribbean feel to it. The buildings will be constructed of all concrete and concrete masonry units, CMU, metal roofs, hurricane-impact glass, and all Energy Star rated windows, roofs, appliances, so forth. Next slide, please. And this is the artist rendition of what the building will look like. There were a few comments from the planning board that to add some elements to the elevations, we've agreed to those. And there was some conditions of approval that were listed. I believe those are the next slides. Next slide, please. These were the additional conditions of approval. We've reviewed these in detail and are agreeable to all of these. One other topic that was a bit of a concern was, we are using it this time, Wells Landing as just a working name. There'll be discussions on what the project will actually be named as, as in the future. So the Wells Landing is not exactly what it will be named. So I'm open to any questions you may have.
My quick question is the public art. Are you required to have a public art at this project?
We are not required to have it, but we have proposed public art. It'll be determined in the future, once we kind of know where we want to put it, what it will be, but, but yes, we would, we would like to have public art somewhere in the building. We're thinking a good place for it. We haven't seen the north parcel. I don't know if we skipped over that, but there's a plaza in the north parcel that, that might have be a good place for that. It's more of a public gathering place.
And so I'll ask staff, why is this excluded from the public art requirement?
I was just posing that same question to Mike Rumpf, actually, or Colin, Mayor, because it's new construction. They should be. So I, Colin, are you, are you on?
I'm on, but I have to look at the ordinance. I don't know, I, we may have an exemption for affordable housing.
This is Brian Herbert again. I, I believe that's what it was. We were under the impression that-
First time.
That we did have to do it. And we're willing to do it. It's, you know.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. You know, I see it right above the, it's the last aspect, right below signage, as a low-income housing project, project is exempt for participating in the Art in Public Places program. Thank you.
This is our first project coming through like that.
Yeah. Yeah, Blanket Breeze East was also exempt.
Okay.
Yeah, we do exempt the affordable, low-income housing ordinance.
All right. I believe we have a motion and a second. And I, yes. Elizabeth, you have the floor.
Yeah. Hi, it's Elizabeth. I just wanted to say that because we were an affordable housing community, we, we were exempt from the Art in Public Places, but we're actually very excited to participate in it. That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, is there anything else from the, the commission before we have a roll call? Hearing none? May I have a roll call? No, this is a site plan. So do we have a, I'm sorry, Crystal, do we get a motion to remove from the table?
Yes, we did.
And then we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Alright, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Mayor, in an abundance of caution, let's go back and do 2004-0 again. I, I am not satisfied that we did that title correctly. Bundling these ordinances together has been a bit confusing. So let me read that ordinance one more time, and if the commission will indulge one more vote on it.
I appreciate that.
2004-0, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a portion of the unimproved 30-foot wide right-of-way of northeast First Street running north and south from northeast 11th Avenue South, approximately 150 feet, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, seeing no more further comments from anyone and from the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Bodis 4-0.
Ordinance, oh, ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, mayor.
No, I, I thought, I knew we did 041, but if you'd like to make sure you got the language correctly, please go ahead.
We're, we're good now on 041. That was, that was not the issue. But we're ready to go to 042. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, providing for the adoption of the Boynton Beach Administrative Amendments to the Florida Building Code, 7th Edition, 2020, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So any comments from the, the commission or the public? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Bodis 4-0.
Ordinance 2004-3, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of a 25-foot wide portion of Southwest Sixth Street right-of-way, consisting of a portion of the unimproved swell abutting the east lot line of the property located at 704 Southwest 25th Avenue, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I know that there was, I have a couple of questions. I know that there was some flooding issues in Chapel Hill area. Was this area subject to any of that flooding issues?
Yeah, Colin Groff says, city manager, I don't believe this particular location was. It was actually a little bit further north than this.
Okay. And then my, my next question is, is this is at the request of the adjacent property owner?
Yes.
Are they paying anything in regards to the, the cost of recording or any of the, the city's costs to obtain this additional land?
I don't believe so.
Okay. As I remember, when someone wanted an unbuiltable lot, we put them, required them to make a payment. And so you're saying that there is no value to this easement?
No, Mr. Mayor, that, it is Colin Groff says, city manager, sorry, I should identify myself. This is actually an area, and there was a presentation, if you'd like it, but it's an area of roadway where the right-of-way is much greater than 50 feet. It was basically where two plats came together, and there was some extra land, so they threw it into the right-of-way. The problem is the lot adjacent to it made it very difficult to build on. And so we're actually just squaring back off the right-of-way and putting it back on this lot so it can be built on. And, and I think the owner and the applicant had a presentation, if you wanted one, but that's basically the explanation. It's, it's squaring off a piece of property to match the property around it.
Okay. I don't need a presentation.
No.
Alright, and we have a, a motion and a second for this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, seeing no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Bodis 4-0.
Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner Katz has arrived onto the meeting for the record.
Commissioner Katz, are you here on the meeting?
Yes, sir, mayor, thank you very much. I apologize, there was a school board meeting on a Tuesday night for, for some reason, and it ran long, and I am here now, so thank you very much. I have nothing to disclose.
Okay. Since you're here now, we did go through a lot of ordinances that you were absent. And so Jim and Crystal, is he allowed to vote on those ordinances? Or are we going to say that he was absent?
He was absent during roll call. I believe it's the, obviously, commission to reread those ordinances and have another vote? I'll defer to the committee.
That, that's what would be required. It would require a motion to reconsider. Otherwise, it's just the ordinance is passed based upon the people present at the time the, the roll call was done.
Alright, so. Yes.
I, I think if, if there's a particular ordinance that Commissioner Katz wants to bring up, then we could consider it, but otherwise, we go with the vote as is.
It's been unanimous.
It's been unanimous, and so Commissioner Katz, are you okay being absent for the, the votes that we've already called?
Yes, I have the utmost faith in my colleagues, thank you.
Alright, still got some left. So we have a, a motion and a second for ordinance 20-043. There's no further comments from the commission or from any attendees. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Bodis 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to the city manager's report, discuss potential ordinance prohibiting, prohibiting the use of polystyrene foam products in city facilities on city property.
We have our sustainability coordinator, Rebecca Harvey, has prepared a presentation, and Commissioner Romulus had raised this a few meetings ago and wanted to, we, we put a presentation for you to have a conversation amongst yourselves as to whether or not you would like to move forward perhaps with a future ordinance, potentially restricting the use of this in the city. So Rebecca is going to take you through the presentation.
Thank you, Lori, good evening. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay. Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator, the city of Boynton Beach. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. As Lori noted, tonight's discussion follows from October 20th, when commission directed staff to present options for reducing the environmental impact of expanded polystyrene foam in the city, otherwise known as EPS foam, or what we commonly refer to as styrofoam. Next slide, please. Plastic waste is addressed in the city's 2020 Climate Action Plan, both within government operations as Strategy G 3.1 Green Office Practices, as well as in the community-wide strategy of C 3.1 Waste Reduction and Recycling. In addition to helping to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is the primary aim of the Climate Action Plan, these practices have very important co-benefits, including economic development, ecosystem protection, and public health. And through the public input that we garnered for the Climate Action Plan, plastic reduction consistently rose to the top of the priorities among our community members. And in fact, it was a community member who brought this ordinance to our attention, to Commissioner Romulus's attention, and is to credit really for having us this discussion tonight. Her name is Kira Lichtenfeld, and she's a high school student in Boynton Beach, and also the organization Oceana that is active in promoting plastic waste reduction throughout our region. I'll take the next slide, please. Polystyrene is a petroleum-based product made from styrene, which is a colorless, flammable liquid that occurs naturally in some fruits, vegetables, meats, and nuts, but is also found in other things such as insulation materials and carpet backing, cigarette smoke, and automobile exhaust, printing cartridges, and copy machine toner, among other things. And there are two main forms of consumer products made from polystyrene. They are expanded polystyrene, or what we refer to as styrofoam or EPS foam, and then extruded polystyrene, which is the hard, rigid plastic with the number six on it. Next slide, please. The environmental concern stems from how easily and commonly this material is littered. Whether intentionally or not, polystyrene foam is so lightweight that is commonly littered or blown out of trash receptacles and migrates to the storm drain system and eventually to our beaches and our oceans. This plastic is not biodegradable, not recyclable. It breaks down in the marine environment into smaller and smaller pieces, which negatively impact our water quality and harm marine life that often mistakes pieces of polystyrene for food. Next slide. As I noted, polystyrene is not recyclable, despite the fact that it does have this number six on it. So there's common misperception that it's recyclable, but most recycling systems, including our own, do not have a market for it. And the potential economic impacts for our community are numerous. Through a lot of litter, you know, we see it around our town, so we know, our city, excuse me. eventual impact could be a decrease in our coastal tourism, rising costs of storm drain maintenance, a negative aesthetic effect, inequitable distribution of pollution in our communities, degradation of wetland systems, and ultimately a poorly perceived lack of environmental commitment by the city, which we of course do not want. So I'll take the next slide. There are state laws affecting what local governments can and cannot do to regulate plastics. And the first one here is the most relevant. This is Florida statute 500.90, preempts the regulation of polystyrene products, but quote, "does not limit the authority of a local government to restrict the use of polystyrene by individuals on public property, temporary vendors on public property, or entities engaged in a contractual relationship with the local government for the provision of goods and services." I'll also note that there is a statute on the books also preempting municipalities from banning or charging fees on plastic bags. Not the immediate topic this evening, but good to, to put the, the issue in context. Next slide. When we last discussed options for reducing plastic waste, back in September 2018, commission approved the development of a voluntary incentive-based green business recognition program. We launched the program in March 2019, and we currently have six businesses enrolled through the pilot phase of the program. We have taken a bit of a, of a break due to COVID, but as John Durgan mentioned earlier this evening, that we will be starting it up again, and I am talking to the CRA and some businesses currently about, about signing up. Next slide. Okay. In considering how to regulate polystyrene on city property, there are essentially three decisions to consider. To whom the regulations apply, which specific materials to include, and how to enforce the ordinance. This slide that you're seeing now deals with that first issue of, of to whom the regulations apply. So this is a list of 17 Florida cities and counties that are prohibiting the use and distribution of polystyrene foam on city or county properties. And you can see in the first column, contractors and temporary vendors, that almost every jurisdiction here is, is applying their ban to, to these users, to these entities, contractors, temporary vendors, including special event permities. In the second column, you'll see that some of the cities and counties are also prohibiting members of the public from bringing polystyrene foam into the city or county parks, onto the beaches, and in some cases, on marinas and docks. And this can be applied both through formal facility rental agreements, such as renting a park shelter or pavilion. And in some cases, it's also applied to general users who are just in the park through signage and various degrees of enforcement, which I'll talk about shortly. And then in the final column here, some of the cities at the bottom, several of them, are also regulating the use of polystyrene in the public right-of-way. And so these include sidewalk cafe permities, commercial vending permities, and other right-of-way usage. And a couple notes here, the, the single asterisk, Orlando and Orange County have passed internal policies rather than ordinances. The rest of these are ordinances. And a few down at the bottom here, I just wanted to note, are also regulating businesses outside the public right-of-way. They were grandfathered in to be able to do that because they had ordinances on the books before the state preemption took effect in 2018. Now, there's a lot here, we can look at this later if you have specific questions. Next slide, please. The second decision to consider is what specific materials to include in the ordinance. The first item here, polystyrene foam footwear, which includes our clamshell containers, cups, plates, and bowls, all made out of foam, is included in every one of those ordinances that I just showed you. Some of them also include item number two, which are the unencapsulated polystyrene foam products, such as coolers, beach and pool toys, that are not covered with a more durable material, hence unencapsulated. Some of, some cities choose to do that, especially at their marinas, docks, and beaches. And then in addition to this, some of the jurisdictions are also rolling in additional single-use plastics into their ordinances, most commonly polypropylene straws, as well as in some cases, the hard polystyrene number six footwear, such as the plastic utensils, clamshells, cups, cup lids, that are not recyclable. And also, the models, the state model ordinance and the city of Hollywood that just passed a new ordinance did include intentional balloon releases, a ban on those in their cities. So these are all options to consider. Next slide. The exceptions to the ban are pretty standard. You're going to see these in most of the ordinances, and these include prepackaged foods that have been filled and sealed prior to receipt by the vendor. Of course, agreements and contracts issued prior to the effective date of the ordinance. And then an ADA exemption, that is generally, I've only seen that in reference to straws, plastic straws. This is a ban on polystyrene foam only. I have not seen an ADA exception, I don't believe it's as, as relevant there, but it is in the case of straws. And then the last item would be free samples or food distribution drives. If food is prepackaged again in, in foam materials, then it would be exempted. Next slide, please. Next slide. One back, there we go. Okay, so the third decision to consider is regarding penalties and enforcement. Where did it go? I'm seeing the alternative slide. Is that what you all are seeing? There it is, penalty. I'm sorry? Yes. Can you all hear me okay? Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
So this is the slide I was looking for. So the first thing to note here regarding penalties and enforcement is education, education, education. Best practices for enforcing any such ordinance is an educational campaign to last at least six months before any enforcement. In the case of vendors, you can enforce through the contract. This would include in the violation situation terminating a contractual relationship or revoking a special event permit. And many of the cities do include fines in their ordinances. If fines are applied, I would note that a best practice is to include a financial hardship waiver for businesses that might not be able to afford that. And it's generally a an escalating fine structure that starts with a warning or a smaller fine and increasing from there. And some cities do not have a fine in their ordinance, and they emphasize rather that the purpose is to educate more than to penalize. And so, for example, for park users, the rangers could use the ordinance as an opportunity to educate and talk to residents about why we have a ban in place and what the alternative materials are. Next slide, please. Two more slides. Okay, so there are there are alternatives to polystyrene foam readily available. Here's an example of a foam clamshell container from a wholesaler online. And it's nine cents per unit for the foam item and a number of different replacement items, ranging from four cents more per unit up to about thirteen cents more per unit. I gave this as an example because it's that there's actually a bigger discrepancy when you look at clamshell containers. There's such a variety of different types of substitutes. If you look at cups or plates, the price of the foam compared to paper is is pretty negligible for the consumer. And the next slide. Finally, I will share a few lessons that I've learned from colleagues in other cities that I've spoken to. First of all, they are reporting that the residents in general are very supportive of these ordinances. And I've noticed that in our own city, as I mentioned, that it's very, very high priority for the community. Second, they are not reporting seeing problems with compliance. And in fact, find that the businesses may be skeptical at first, but once they start seeing the demand from their customers, they do report seeing the benefits of of the policy. Again, outreach and education plays a very important role. And some of the cities are combining an ordinance with an internal procurement policy that could be more holistic and add in other single use plastics and sustainable products. Considering minimum party size, this is something that a few cities have done. If if applying the ordinance in parks for facility rental, you could, you know, limit it to just parties over a certain size, twenty five or thirty, whatever number you choose. Working with stakeholders is important upfront to understand their needs and work with them to identify alternatives for them. And then finally, providing positive publicity to the vendors is something that other cities are seeing as a way to make it successful. Give them sign signage, stickers, icons to put on their social media and to to share the news that they are going green. And that is the end of my slide. Thank you so much for listening to me. I'm happy to open it up now to questions and discussions.
Sure. You know, Rebecca, thank you so much for taking the time to really dive deep into this and to give us options on how we can possibly implement this. I also want to thank, I believe it's Kira, oh, I may be wrong in her name, for bringing this up. She's just a dedicated high school student who is just doing the long and hard and diligent work of setting our future up to be better and helping us to change the trajectory of where we see our planet and our world headed. So I'm all on board for that. I'm right now, I'm really just more so willing to hear out my colleagues and and gauge your interest in terms of where we can move forward with this and and how we can implement a lot of these initiatives. I'm also willing to hear from staff as well, what these look like in terms of cost analyses and and how it would look like for us to implement a lot of these things. So I I just would like to just kind of just open up the floor for just dialogue right now and kind of see where we all get collectively. And then we can, if if we are able to come to a decision tonight, then we can do that.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
I want to say first of all, thank you to everybody who moved this forward from Kira to Commissioner Romulus and and of course, Ms. Harvey. I could not support this anymore. I I think this all hits so many checkboxes. And I remember having the conversation with Rebecca many months ago about having those comparisons and the differences are negligible in terms of cost, but the environmental impact will be significant. And the effect of Styrofoam is as well known. So here's the deal. My questions are not about whether or not we need to move forward with this. My questions are really around how far can we go? That's one. And how do we meaningfully enforce this? You know, Rebecca showed this slide about, of course, we can we can control this within government buildings. But I'm also in favor of controlling this in terms of our parks and our beaches and things of that nature. But you know, but here's one of my biggest concerns. How do exactly are we going to enforce this in addition to education? Because if we want something to be taken seriously, we need to actually have some teeth in it. And procurement is certainly one avenue that I'm I'm in favor of and making making sure this is part of that policy. But I wasn't sure if Rebecca, if you wanted to chime in, if there were some other enforcement possibilities in terms of everything we've discussed so far.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, I'll let Rebecca follow up. We have talked a little bit in house with staff on how to and how we would put some enforcement in. That's the real question is, is how far do we want to go on city property? Again, remember, the only place we can do bans is on city property. So the question is, is I give you an example. How far do you want to go? Do you want to have citizens who rent a pavilion in a park? If they're caught using this Styrofoam, do you want a fine placed? How to enforce it? It's going to take people and time. That's why I think what Rebecca said, and she can, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but Rebecca said a lot of the cities that are doing this are really pushing the education more than that because because people will want to do it once they understand why. I think there's some incentives. We have some options for some incentives to build in some of our, you know, grayments, if there are formal agreements to rent facilities and things like that. I think there's some incentives we can build in to actually encourage it so the enforcement becomes easier. So it really depends on how far the commission wants to go. And then we will bring back some options for enforcement. And they can range from just education and more voluntary, like Biscayne Bay does, to fines of a hundred dollars like other cities, another city has done.
For repeat offenders, people consistently do it.
So if there's a way to track that, you could. Again, is how do you track it? How do you, you know? Enforcement of these kind of bans are very difficult on individuals that are on public property. That's why I think most cities push the education side of it as much as anything else.
Yes, no question on the education for sure.
Yeah, I'll just add on, thank you, Colin, that it's it's really both in terms of what they have in the ordinance. It's actually the large majority of cities do have a fine in their ordinance. There's only, I think I could count on one hand that the numbers that don't even include a fine at all. Whether those are all enforcing it is another question. And and I do agree with you, Colin, on that, that there is more education happening, except in terms, obviously, of contractual relationships where it's more easily enforced.
Understood. Well, well, thank you. And for now, I'll just reiterate my position, and that is not only am I in favor of it on government buildings, but also including in our in our beaches and parks.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
I'd just like to chime in. I too, without rehashing what has been said, totally a hundred and ten percent support this. Again, if it's if it's a, say, a public park that's being rented, maybe we can say upfront, if if caught violating these stipulations that we set upfront, then that organization can't use it again or for a period of time or something to put some teeth in it. But I'm not so sure I want to go as far as some big fine right now. I think education would be the way to go right now. And if it, if it comes to that point at which we need to put some dollars against the violators, then then we can re readdress this. But right now, I think the education would be the the best approach as to get buy in from those businesses that are not really educated as to the effect, the negative effect that it has on on the total environment. So that's, I'm all for it, but just a little more information.
Okay. Thank you. The Commissioner Katz, did you have any comments in regards to this?
Just that while I I support it in some capacity, certainly the city's specific activity in our facilities. I'm not particularly a proponent of policing people who might come to our beach or come to our park because I don't, I don't know how you, you can't arrest somebody for not wearing a mask, but you're going to arrest them for having a Styrofoam cup. So that's, I feel like that's fraught with some peril. So I I support the nature of it, and I I look forward to what progress we can make in the spirit of it. I just, I want to make sure we set in place policy that is is realistic and doesn't become, you know, overbearing on our residents. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Katz that the city does not to be, need to be the environmental police, even though maybe hopefully someday that can change. My ideas mainly has to do with the people using our pavilions and parks, whether with a special event permit or reservation, that there is, I believe, some, do we require a deposit based upon for them to use the facility that we give back once the facility is done in clean order?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's some of the things we could look into is is, you know, deposits or, you know, incentive discounts, maybe on the rent, and if you get caught using it, maybe you pay extra.
So that, so.
If you're interested, we could bring back.
So the, my thought is, is that we require the, you know, the sustainability deposit where we can say, you know, if you want to use these foam polystyrene, we're not saying you can't, however, your sustainability deposit is going to be used for environmental measures because of the the negative effect that these have. And if they don't do it, similar to our Go Green initiative, we can give them a discount back on what they pay. So, you know, the simple numbers in my head is that, let's say we ask our residents an extra ten dollars for sustainability deposit, and if they don't use foam or anything like that, we'll give them fifteen dollars back, which is part of the the ability to cost, because we want to incentivize our residents to be more environmentally friendly. You know, it's, it's tough to say, hey, you're, you're going to be better off by spending a little bit more. But I think we as a government have that ability to incentivize our residents to be more sustainable, similar to the way our federal government incentivized drivers to buy electric vehicles for a very long time. And now that electric vehicles have been on the roads six, seven plus years, there's really no tax credit left. But people are still buying it because they understand the benefit it does provide. So I feel that we ask for a sustainability deposit. And, you know, I don't, I think it's going on the honesty of our residents is what I would do. Then the the second aspect is the future contracts. I don't necessarily think it would be a good idea to change our contracts with most of our current vendors to have them in part of this, but to have future contracts. One of the future contracts would be the RFP that goes out for the cafe at our City Hall Library and cafe at our Civic Center. So those two aspects we include in the contract where we have that ability to, you know, require our vendors to not have this type of product. One of the things that I'd also like to include in the things that we don't allow in public areas is confetti. So when I was working, you know, cleaning up with Boynton Cares in the Intracoastal Park, it was impossible to pick up confetti in the grass. You know, this polystyrene, you could at least pick up most of it. But confetti in grass is something that I'd like to outlaw in city parks and places. And the last aspect in regards to the the beach, and I guess Harvey Oyer Boat Ramp Park, is that it is something that we may want to move forward with a fine or a warning because we do have park rangers, we do have people coming through. We do not necessarily the lifeguards, but we do have people there on staff that are able to issue those fines because I believe a park ranger is able to issue a citation for a violation of the city. I got a head nod from Lori. So the the places that we do have park rangers is kind of where, for example, yes, we have a year of warnings for any type of Styrofoam at our beach and at our boat ramp. And that way, we are in the abundance of caution that everybody knows that you can't bring Styrofoam here. Otherwise, the the after in two thousand twenty two almost is when we'll start enforcing it with, you know, a ten, the same fine that we would do if someone parked their car and didn't pay for it. Maybe not that much, maybe it's ten dollars, maybe it's fifteen dollars. But it's something that I feel we we need to work better, especially. I remember going to the the Tri-Cities barbecue, and we did a tour of the new manufacturing of these footwear products made out of, was it sugarcane stocks? And I think, you know, the, one of the things that the the city can do is buy in bulk and help anyone to have that capability to have. I don't necessarily know where we could work this out, but I would like to see if the city could help buy in bulk, have a contract so that any of our vendors or anybody who wants to work, when they're getting the their permit, they can buy from us at a whole, rather, kind of like a wholesale price included with the the event purchase or the reservation. And so those are my ideas in regards to the polystyrene foam products.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your input. And I would kind of sum it up with taking a little bit of everything that's been said by by most. So absolutely, we're not going to try to go into the realm of penalizing individuals and trying to, you know, hunt them down for dropping styrene, you know, polystyrene or whatever it may be around our local area as well. Due to preemption, we do understand that we can't enforce this in a private or in commercial locations. So we can only enforce this within our realms or within our, you know, specific locations. So so that being said, what I would really like for us to to do, and and I would like to direct staff, if my colleagues agree with this, to just kind of develop something. And I think Stephen Grant, our our mayor, was kind of on the path that I'm looking for where this will be something that is long term. It's a long term initiative that will help to change behaviors. I I think really that's the ultimate goal here with with any of, you know, these sustainable or sustainability efforts. It's to change behaviors and to get people to think differently about what they do with their trash or how they, you know. Dispose of different things that can be harmful to the environment. So I would definitely like to see something that would be where we have signage posted that kind of gives some type of. And I some type of an idea that over time we will not be allowing for certain, you know, types of plastics to be used within our public spaces, within our public parks. And, you know, you can and will be fined, you know. To a certain extent, if caught and as we are improving our technology where we have cameras being, you know. Implemented around our parks and our public areas. You know, perhaps that's also a way that, you know, people could kind of be mindful that, hey, you're on camera, you're being watched. And we we can have a way to verify if you're disposing of. Things that shouldn't be disposed or just kind of littering and dropping things where they shouldn't be. So that that's kind of what I have in mind right now, again, it's not concrete, I'm I'm. Open to suggestions and I'd like to see how, you know, my colleagues and staff would. Kind of, you know, and give input to help implement all this and we can do this over a phasing period, it doesn't have to be tomorrow. So that's that's what I have so far.
All right, so Lori, can you come back with all the things we've stated? And then we can go through them to see if we want to move forward on the individual items or what timeframe that we would want to look at, maybe, you know, example. For the the fines, maybe that's something we would want to look towards the end of next year. And we start with some of the lower hanging fruit of the educational campaign to start with first.
I think based on your comments tonight, we probably have enough to even prepare. How about a draft ordinance for you to to think to look at with, I think Commissioner Romulus, I love the idea of the phasing or do you? Would you rather us just summarize your comments tonight and bring that back for you to maybe call down? Or we could take.
I I think if you bring it back to us for our next meeting, we can put a timeline of where we want to go.
Okay.
Each thing and and that is regards of the the phasing.
We will do it.
All right.
And and one more thing to add, in addition to, you know, the the conversation with signage, you know, I think that's something that we can. Hopefully work in with our Public Works Department where we can start, you know, putting signage around certain areas that would. You know, start to make people think differently about how and where they dispose of their trash.
Absolutely, I I see a future, you know, a marketing, literally a marketing campaign that is in perpetuity on something like that, built into our basic signage and. You know, to continually put the message out there, even subconsciously, they're seeing it. It makes a difference over time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and was there someone from the audience or that would like to make a comment on this? Raise a hand. Ramona Young, I do see you, glad I double checked. Ramona, I have unmuted you.
Yes. I I think that Ramona Young, 101 South Federal Highway, Boynton. I think everything you're saying is absolutely marvelous. The point that I would like to make is about education. The marketing that Lori just talked about and so that you see it. And you kind of. Internalize it. Would also be for businesses. Because if they get up, you can't force them, and I understand that. But if they get on board. And they're not selling as much of this corrupt stuff. That Boynton then becomes. The city that is going to be totally clean from. Whatever you call that stuff. I mean, every time I get it from. Some restaurant or some some place, some entity. My skin crawls because I know it's so bad. But everything you're saying is correct, but you have to incorporate, if you don't try to educate and incorporate. And have them voluntarily come in, I'm talking about businesses. People will go to the store and buy it and use it. I mean, the the businesses have to buy in. And it has to be education and it has to be a prolonged time. You want to find people and I don't think that's the answer. I think the answer is to make you not want to use it, to tell someone, no, 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 do you have anything else? That's what happened when people started the campaign against smoking. It took a long time to educate people. With, I don't think it's something that you can rush into. But I think everything that you're saying is right on point, everyone. I just think that we, if you have businesses, people visit businesses and tell them what the plan is. That they will gradually move towards that. Without them having an extra amount of costs given COVID. Also, sir, and commission. I had spoken with you about trash cans that. Were in Miami Haiti section that were artful. And that made you want to put trash in the trash can, I sent you a picture. And if you have it, you might want to share it with the rest of the commissioners. To want people to be attracted to depositing their trash into a pretty trash can. And because all these trash cans were absolutely gorgeous, I took a picture, it was so pretty. And it said, keep Miami beautiful, and that's what we want to do in Boynton is keep Boynton beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young, and I will let the city manager that email so she can distribute it to the city commission. I know that I'm all in favor of having more trash cans throughout the city. I do feel that. There is not enough trash cans in District Two. Especially with all the the convenience stores that are there. It's kind of like once you get out of the store and you you eat the the product or drink the product that you you bought, there's no place to deposit it, so. I hopefully this is something that we look into as part of. Our ordinance or our practices and protocols here in Boynton Beach to make it easier. For people to deposit trash in the correct location. I I heard a story that, you know, in Disney World, it's about every 30 to 50 feet, there's a trash can. Because because they realize that unless, if it's too far, if it's 100 feet, people aren't going to throw it on the ground.
There are people picking up trash.
I know, and the litter hikers, it's amazing to follow them. And I commend them for all that they do, and I'd like to encourage more people to go out for a walk and pick up some trash.
Just one thing, sir. If the trash cans could be implemented with. After school project for artists. Community service for artists. So that people paint the trash cans themselves and they become very personalized. And people take pride in that, so that's something else that I would appreciate you considering.
Right, thank you. And I did receive a comment. From online from Caitlin Kuchanata. No need to rush right away, but I most definitely support a fee to drive it home after a period of education, direct outreach to residents and businesses.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast, 27th day. Since a lot of you are new, I know Commissioner Hay remembers this, one of the very first art projects in our city when we got our arts program. Was to decorate our big dumpsters around the downtown. And there's still some of them around over here near the library where the old library was back in this neighborhood. And I'm sure Commissioner Hay can tell you about how beautiful they are. So this is a long established tradition we've had in the city for decorating our dumpsters. But I think it's a fabulous idea to also decorate trash cans, so I love that, yay. And I'd like to say thank you for considering this, I mean, I've been up here pestering you guys for what? Five, six years now, or Lori's heard this for ages now. With me coming up and giving information about styrofoam and plastics and plastic bags and but. You know, it's taken about four years, but I'm glad we're finally moving forward five years, I think. May have even been the prior commission under Mayor Taylor when I started talking about this. So I'm glad to see there's movement forward on this and thank you Commissioner Romulus for bringing this back up again and helping push this. I wish it hadn't been another four years lost here, but I I'm glad we are going forward and thank you very much. And there are lots of amazing ideas and. If you're not aware, yes, they do still give massive rebates on getting electric cars because I'm getting a nice big one on my taxes next year. It just depends on the car you're getting, thank you.
Is there any other comments from the commission or the audience? Saying none. We will now move to new business. Proposed Resolution 20 dash 129. Approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the SEIU Florida Public Services Union, CTW, CLC, Blue Collar Unit and the City. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry. All right, and I saw with the the blue collar, there was a 98.5% approval of this contract. So I will be in favor of it. Is there any other comments from the commission before we proceed to a vote? Hearing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 20 dash 130, approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the SEIU Florida Public Services Union. CTW, CLC, White Collar Unit and the City. They have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second discussion. Mayor, could you, I apologize, could you repeat the item?
This is approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the SEIU Florida Public Services Union, CTW, CLC, White Collar Unit and the City. The backup shows that this had 100% approval or unanimous from the union.
Thank you, and I I wanted to speak on this because I'd requested some additional numbers. From the city manager as it relates to the two and a half percent and what the impact financially would be to bring that to a 3%. Now, we can't change this, it's a negotiated settlement, but it is my desire and intent. To reject this item and send it back with the explicit direction to city staff. To tell SEIU that that 3% is the board's direction if there were a majority, the these employees in particular. Had worked in the field throughout COVID and I just, I have a a personal passion to to try to help, you know, employees and and working class people and. And the financial impact is minimal for SEIU if they were to receive the additional half percent to get to three. And and if if anyone wants information on that, staff has those numbers and and they could produce them right now. But that that's my intended position is to vote this down because I would I would like to see a little extra done, you know, I've I've been fighting this battle. On the district side during these times and employees, especially those on the front line. You know, they've been working under tough conditions and and if you can financially shoulder it and this is a marginal increase, I I think that. It it's meaningful, not just financially for for our employees, but, you know, it it shows them that we're thinking about them and we're appreciating them. I have nothing but respect for the two and a half percent offer, but I would personally like to go for 3% and and will will not be voting for these. Unless it were to be sent back to negotiations with the direction to increase it to three and upon approval by the bargaining unit.
Well. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Katz, I think this is something that we could have done together. As a board earlier, because this is one of those aspects that we have the ability to gather as a board to discuss these union contracts. We're not in the sunshine. The fact that 100% of the that white collars already approved and we already approved the blue collar. That means we would have to reconsider the blue collars, otherwise we are giving the white collars an additional raise and not the the blue collar.
Correct, and and that would be, that would be my request as well, I apologize with running late to the meeting, I'm a little disorganized, but that that was my intent and desire and. And and that's where I would be on that.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion? To, we're still on R 20 dash 130. And so we would still need a motion to approve and then you can, you would be able to vote against it. And that would maintain the status quo and you can, we can give direction to the staff to renegotiate for additional monies.
Yeah, so that that would be my intent to make a motion to to not approve this one and to, again, I apologize, running late, that I didn't see that previous vote had passed. And and that was recorded as a a yes vote on my part, which means I would also like to reconsider that vote.
Okay, so Jim, do we still request motions in the affirmative to vote them down?
Yes, you do, Mayor, the motion should be in the affirmative.
So I would make a motion to. With with the notation for staff to go back and state that that 3% is on the table for SEIU to accept the white collars in this case. To reject the proposed Resolution R 20 dash 130.
No, sir, that 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 motion would be out of order when a met, when a collective bargaining agreement reaches the reaches the city commission. It's a thumbs up or a thumbs down vote, it cannot be a conditional vote one way or the other. Because the bargaining occurs at the city manager to union level, not at the commission level.
Understood, so the.
Doesn't support it for whatever reasons, it should simply vote no, and if a majority votes no, the contract is not ratified. And the city and the union go back to the bargaining table.
So the motion to reject.
And the the affirmative.
Motion.
Commissioner Katz, there's already a motion on the table, I moved and you seconded and then we went into discussion, so the the motion is there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Romulus. And so do we have other comments from the the commission?
Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand what's happening, so the plan here is to approve as is. And afterwards, Commissioner Katz, at his discretion, can make a separate motion to go back to the table, is that what's happening?
No, that is not what's happening, so.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
So from my knowledge, we pass Resolution Number 20 dash 129 unanimously approving the two and a half percent to our blue collar workers.
Yes.
We are moving forward with the same two and a half percent for our white collar workers. Commissioner Katz stated that he would like to reconsider his previous vote and vote against the two and a half percent. We, under not having the ability to bargain and not being able to bar, you know. Speak with the city manager as a board or a commission before the final bargaining has taken place, we were taken out of this conversation. And there was 100% approval from the union and 98.5% from the the blue collar union. And so that is where we're at right now. Commissioner Katz feels that the union workers deserve more and. You know, we are in a difficult situation in our economy and country and city. And so I understand both points of view.
Mayor, let me come back to the procedure for the benefit of the Vice Mayor. The motion was to approve the collective bargaining agreement. A yes vote would do just that, a no vote would do the opposite, if a majority votes no. The contract is not ratified. And it goes back to the city and to the union to continue negotiations. The city and the union may take a signal from what the commission does about what they would negotiate if it goes back to them. Obviously, the union would not object to, you know, a 3% increase instead of a 2.5. But at the moment, the commission only has a thumbs up or a thumbs down vote on the motion.
Understood, thank you, Jim, I appreciate that.
So is there any further commission, comment from commission or the the public?
Mayor.
Yes.
I, I just want to explore this conversation a little bit more, hearing what Commissioner Katz has mentioned. I'm not opposed to allowing for the union to, um, have a, a higher increase. It, it would just be with the understanding that next year, based on what comes back from, you know, with, with COVID and the numbers that are going to be coming back, that they may not have, we may not be able to do, you know, much, if anything, um, based on where we may be financially. So if, if we have the means and it's been agreed and based on the numbers that you just mentioned, you know, where there's a hundred percent, ninety-eight percent, I'm okay with approving it as it is. Um, if we have the means to be able to allow for a higher increase, um, I would be amenable to that. Again, though, with the understanding that next year with collective bargaining, we just won't have a lot to, you know, a lot of wiggle room to work with. So I just want to put that out there and see if that's something that Commissioner Katz is considering or if, if that's something that he sees aware.
The other option that we have is we can table this item and reconsider to table the, the one twenty-nine. And that way we can, the, the city staff can explain these bargaining contracts. Because is this two and a half percent for this year? Are we going back on a yearly basis? We have not received, uh, a, I have not received an overview of these two bargaining agreements. This, I do know that this bargaining agreement is for three years. Lori?
Yes, sir. The, that information is in your backup in the actual agreement and Julie's available to answer any questions now, should you have any. We, uh, uh, moving into this current fiscal year is when this, this contract, uh, we would retroactive to October one of this year we're in, moving forward into Sep- to September thirty of next year. We funded two percent in the budget across the board for, uh, SEIU, which is blue and white collar, along with unrepresented general employee population. Uh, through the bargaining, we ended up bargaining and, um, going to two and a half percent. And I'm going to ask, have to ask Julie, I, as far as what that additional cost is, that it was not budgeted. So we, we will have to, um, probably reach into reserves for that, for the, the two and a half. And then anything above that would, um, need to come out of reserves. And that also just to, so that, that is in the, the backup. And Julie, you might be able to summarize it a little bit quickly if we can, if the mayor, if you'd like that.
Yes. Julie, do you would like to?
So, um.
Go ahead, Julie.
Yeah. So basically, um, we, thank you. Um, some of the items that we covered in this agreement, the, the term of the agreement is for three years. We do have reopeners in the contract for, um, wages for each year. So we'll go back each year with them to discuss wages. And, um, also we have a re opener if certain conditions occur with regard to insurance. So for example, if we were to change plans or, um, not offer the same type of plan or increase deductibles or something of that nature, we would go back to the table to discuss that. If everything were to remain the same, we would not. In addition to the two and a half percent increase, we, um, provided the ability for the unit members to convert, um, additional leave time into their health savings account. Um, we provided some additional opportunities for receiving training assignment pay and out of class pay. And we made some non-monetary changes to the discipline article and for some call-in time provisions. And I think those were really the main things overall. Uh, you know, the last time that we had this agreement open for three years ago, we had really done a kind of a complete overhaul and it has seemed to be a successful document for, you know, the parties to work with. So we've been pleased with how it's been working. So there were just a, you know, a couple of monetary and a little bit of operational things that just needed some adjustment. If you had any other, um, specific questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Um, can you please state your name and department for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
Uh, just, just to chime in, uh, I, I feel where, uh, Commissioner Katz is coming from and, 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 and that's good. Uh, however, I, I, I agree with the Commissioner Romulus has articulated my thoughts exactly. It started off at two percent, then it went to two and a half. And I, I believe the white collars and the, the, the blue collars took all of that in consideration as far as this COVID nineteen. It's a three-year contract. We do have openers, uh, based on certain condition that may, uh, exist. And so my position at this, uh, particular point is to prove, approve as is.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else, uh, with, uh, comments before we, uh, have a vote?
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, and, and just to throw the, the costs and, and Julie could confirm this, um, publicly for everyone because I, we had briefly discussed it. If these motions were be, to be rejected and the, the previous one to be reconsidered and rejected and go back and, and potentially end up at that three percent level for white and blue collar. The total cost increase, I believe, from that two and a half to three percent is fifty-four thousand dollars. Which is a, a level I'm comfortable with personally. Um, and again, I do apologize because I realized that my having spaced out for a second on the previous resolution has thoroughly complicated my sales pitch, but uh, I'm still dedicated to it and I hope staff doesn't hold it against me. Because this is not a criticism of their agreement. Uh, I'm currently fighting to get one point eight percent raises for teachers. Uh, so they're, uh, affording two point five percent, um, was, was absolutely a good offer. I just want to sweeten that up to three percent for this year. Thank you.
And just for the record, I can confirm that the, um, number that Commissioner Cap stated is accurate.
Fantastic. So that, so that number would have to come from reserves and would we need to amend the budget?
I'll have to check tomorrow, but yeah, most likely.
Okay. Um, I, I'd like to believe staff did the, the best that they could, um, with negotiating that they're, they're comfortable with this, the offer that they made to the unions. And, um, we will, we will, uh, Commissioner Katz will have one more year to, uh, do this. So, um, if there's no further comments. Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
And Commissioner Romulus, I didn't hear yours.
I did say aye, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. So the, the vote passes three to two with Vice Mayor, uh, Pentziger and Commissioner Katz dissenting.
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to reconsider, uh, Resolution R two zero dash one two nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of reconsidering Resolution, uh, Art two zero dash one two nine?
Aye.
If you're, yeah, if you're in favor of reconsidering, vote, say aye now.
Aye.
If you are against reconsidering, state nay now.
Nay.
And Commissioner Romulus, I, my apologies again. I did not hear yours.
Nay.
All right. So.
You sound like a horse, Mayor.
Yeah, just a little bit. But that's okay. Um, I believe that is the end of the agenda. Um, before we have Yuri read us out, I just want to wish everyone, uh, a safe and healthy Thanksgiving. You know, the aspect of Thanksgiving is a very different holiday now. Um, because we are in different bubbles. And when you open your bubble up to other people, you're opening it up to everyone they've introduced theirselves to. You know, thinking of Thanksgiving, some people think it's the fourth Thursday in November. Some people think it's a family meal with a turkey and some people think it's just a fam- a meal with family and friends and gathering. So I wish everyone well and good tidings, uh, this season.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Take safe and healthy.
Enjoy your families as much as possible.
Exactly.
As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the City of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the City of Boynton Beach website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes tonight's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and our officials, the city manager, the city staff, thank you for attending tonight's City of Boynton Beach Commission meeting. Be safe and have a great night.
All right. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.